Capron?
Here.
Greckin?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Scott?
Here.
Waters?
Here.
Can we stand for a moment of silence for a call by the Pledge of Allegiance, please? Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I need one of those today. You're going to have to... Glenn Sadeby and Wendy Capps.
Telecommunications.
The proclamation that we agreed were as WCICC Communications Center honored the men and women who serve as public safety dispatchers during the National Public Safety Telecommunications Week, April 19th through 15th, 2017, and where as introduced in Congress in 1991, National Public Safety Telecommunications Week is the second week of the sacred each year. The week is dedicated to public safety telecommunication takers who aid in providing 911 emergency assistance to citizens every day. And whereas every day millions of people depend on the skill, expertise, and commitment of the men and women who work these public safety telecommunications, these individuals help to stay countless lives by responding to emergency calls, dispatching emergency professionals, and equipment providing moral support to citizens in distress. Whereas a term 911 is often associated with rapid emergency response, poison under pressure, aid in compassionate times of distress, and critical decision-making within seconds. Many people don't stop to think about these seemingly legal, spaceless individuals until they experience actual emergencies themselves. Professionals make a difference between life and death in many instances. Now therefore, I robbery staff. Mayor of the City of Sioux City, I am on behalf of the City Council to hereby proclaim April 19th through 15th, 2017, as National Public Safety Telecommunications Week. Right here to you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. We appreciate all the support you give us. I'm truly honored as being the director of a professional group as we have running our 911 center. Wendy, the communications manager, what she does, what the 911 operators do every day to try to keep medical information assistance to the callers, keep them calm before the police and fire and ambulances arrive on scene, and being the calm voice for those officers that are calling for assistance when they're being shot at or just needing assistance for a traffic stop or any other situation going on. We truly are blessed to have the type of communication center that we have, not only in the personnel, but the equipment, the technology that you help us do the job.
I have nothing else.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Davidson, listen. I agree with you. We have a proclamation where as young people who begin drinking before age 15 are five times more likely to develop alcohol dependence than those who begin drinking at age 21. And where kids who have conversations with their parents and learn a lot about the dangers of alcohol and drug use are 50% less likely to use alcohol and drugs than those who don't have such conversations. Whereas 26% of high school seniors in our community have used alcohol in the past 30 days and 15% have consumed five or more drinks in a row. Now therefore, I robbery scout, Mayor of the City of Sioux City, I am on behalf of the City Council to hereby proclaim April 2017 as Alcohol Awareness Month in Sioux City, and call upon all citizens, non-profit organizations, parent, governmental agencies, public-private institutions, business healthcare agencies, and schools to be somebody enjoyed together to prevent alcohol abuse among our youth and adults. I present that to you, say a few words if you would like.
Thank you very much, and first I'd like to thank the City Council on both behalf of Linda Phillips, who is not able to make it here, Sulan Cares and Jackson Recovery Centers, and for all the help that you've provided both to Jackson and Sulan Cares. Coming up two Mondays from now, we're going to have with the Mayor's Youth Commission, a presentation on laws and consequences. That's from 7:00 to 8:00 PM here in City Hall. And we're going to have Roxanne Smith from Jackson Recovery Centers and Brad Ballinger. And there's going to be both Mayor's Youth Commission students and the parents, and there's going to be an opportunity to ask questions for law enforcement. And you may not think that students have a lot of questions for law enforcement, but even during the planning meeting that we had with the exec council, we had about 40 minutes worth of questions on how, how do stu... Like if a kid goes to school, like who is the... Basically, they were shocked to find out that the schools become their parents. So the school can basically do anything that a parent could do. And so then these are good kids, and it's not that they're going to get in trouble for law probably, but they, they just don't know, and if you don't into trouble. And we just want to remind you that the earlier you start drinking, the increases the likelihood of developing a substance abuse problem. So one of the stats that we heard is if you drink before you're 15, it increases your likelihood of becoming addicted to alcohol by five times. So we want to delay that age of onset and keep it so people don't drink until they're 21.
Thank you.
Thanks, Davidson.
What's the date of that event, David?
The date is April 24th. It's here from 7:00 to 8:00 PM.
Thanks, Davidson.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, we'll move on to interviews for the fiscal, effective fiscal and public policy committee. Mike Biella, please come forward, tell us why you would like to serve on the committee.
My name is Mike, my name is Mike Biella. I've been in Sioux City since 2008, and I've been a member of this commission, but I feel that I still have something to learn in the commission and give my input to that commission. That's why I came today to ask you guys if you can accept me again in that commission for the two years to come.
How many openings do we have?
Two.
Two? And is this your second term?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for applying and coming back.
Thank you.
Any other question?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Heidi Conley for Events Facilities Advisory Board.
Hi, I'm Heidi Conley, and I'm the Marketing Director at Kneffler Chevrolet. And I've been wanting to get on a board for a while now, just looking to serve my community, and I think a board is a great way to do that. I got some great advice from my boss. He said, make sure you pick one that you're passionate about and that you're interested in because you're going to be spending a lot of time with it, and you really want to be interested in what you're doing. This board really stood out to me because my background is in marketing and advertising, and I've done a ton of event planning, so I feel that I would bring a lot of knowledge to the board as well as be able to maybe take over some tasks to help promote any of the events that are happening. As a young professional, I know how important it is to have entertainment here for young professionals so that they're here on the weekends, supporting our local economy instead of leaving. But I also know that these facilities are not just for young people, they're for families and empty nesters, and I would do my best to make sure that promoting events for all different age groups and people.
Thanks for making the application. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Heidi. Next is Richard Moore for the Human Rights Commission.
Yes, my name is Richard Moore. I am currently a resident of Sloan, have been there for 21 years. My wife is employed here in Sioux City, and I am serving as pastor of the Evangelical Covenant Church. It's my desire to be able to serve Sulan. Sulan has been very good to our family, having our children raised and educated here. And this is an opportunity for me to be able to give back to the community in service on the Human Rights Commission.
No questions here, but thank you for making the application, too.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Just out of curiosity, a question for the legal. This is one that does not have to be a city resident, right?
I believe that's correct. I think it's the surrounding area, but I was just going to double check on it.
Okay.
Because I was wondering that, too. I know what effective...
As broadly represented the community at large.
Okay. Jay Rosenberg. What's our, what's our makeup? Are female male on the table right now?
And this one's gender balanced, isn't it?
I'm Jay Rosenberg, and I want to serve on the Human Rights Commission. I'm very active in the community. I have worked in social services all my adult life. I'm active on many committees, but this committee is, I believe, human rights are paramount, and I'd like to be considered.
How many openings do we have on that?
One.
One?
Thank you for making the application as well.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next is Senior Advisory Committee, Jean Carlson.
Hello. Nice to see many of you. I've worked with many of you over time. Speaking of over time, this is a senior advisory committee, and I would call myself a senior because I just turned 68 in March, so I'm creeping up there. And...
You're borderline, but we'll consider it anyway, Jean.
Well, yes, thank you. Anyway, I've been in education for my career with education, and I worked, I've lived in Sioux City for 34 years. Of that 27 years has been in the schools. And during that time, I was elementary principal and central office administrator, working with Safe and Drug-Free Schools, Safe School Healthy Student Grant, many programs that stretched across the community. So I have a little bit of a head start on knowing a lot of the community, the community members and the agencies and the community members that are still there, if they haven't retired like, like I did. So I, I saw you were starting up this new advisory, new senior advisory committee, and I thought it looked kind of fun, and just wanted to come down and, and see if I could help you out and help myself out, just making a difference in the world. Trying to.
Definitely. That's great.
Yeah, thanks for applying. She's been conditioned. She has lots of Scott kids and has a principal.
I had yours, and they're all good kids. And I had Rhonda's. I'd have to say that, right? And I had Rhonda's son, too, so Rhonda helped me collect all the pop bottles many years, and we got some money for the school.
Thank you for applying.
Thank you.
I, I want to make a comment on this. How many are we going to need for, for this committee? Is it seven? Okay, and where are we at right now? And we're at five? We have had wonderful people apply for this, this board. And I, I'm really impressed. I'll tell you what, Dan, we have to thank Dan for this board.
I'm delighted.
Yeah, he's the one that got it, got it going.
You're no exception either. I mean, yeah, you're just very well qualified.
Yeah.
Well, thank you.
We are very excited.
Yes, I'd like to, you know, help out a little. I know you're doing a lot of really good things. I was gone a few weeks, and I was getting caught up in the papers, and I was telling my husband, wow, Green Park down, you know, downtown and the possibility of the hotel motel, Cone Park is exciting, so it's just kind of nice to be able to give my opinion, which I can do once in a while.
And that's what we need, so that's a good thing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jean.
We'll move on to the consent agenda, which today is items three through 13D. If you want to speak on these items, please come forward as I read them and state your name and address so it can be entered into the record. You can assume they pass unanimously, and that's a separate roll call, votes requested by a council member. If you want to speak on an item not on the agenda, please come up at the end of the meeting and state your name and, and address again for the record. I'll move the consent agenda. Second. Three is a reading of the City Council minutes of April 3rd and 4th, 2017. Four is a motion acknowledging the Board of Adjustment actions of May 28, 2017. Five is a resolution awarding a purchase order to DTC Industries for the purchase of sodium hypochlorite solution for the water treatment plant. Six is a resolution approving a grant application for Iowa DOT rice program for not, for construction of various road improvements in the Bridgeport and Bridgeport West industrial parks. Want to show a map? Mayor and council, we were asked to show the map a little for your, for your benefit and describe the route a little bit and the project, so... Yeah, I think we'd appreciate that, or I know I would. Bring that up. Just in general, I'll let Glenn explain the, the engineering side of it, but generally speaking, with the commitment of Seaboard Triumph to a second shift into the second phase of their project, which you can actually see there in the green, the upper right-hand corner of the map there, the, the green areas is the addition on to that whole, that whole area, there's the, is the new plant. We were looking for, we took another look at the traffic in the area that per... Some rise funding, 80, 20, 80% funding for a series of 12 different intersection improvements in the Bridgeport area, which will benefit not only Seaboard, but also the other businesses in the area. And then after the announcement of the second shift and second phase, we decided to, staff decided to take another look at it, and Seaboard asked us to do that. And we brought Howard R. Green in to do a sort of a updated traffic study, if you will, and took a look at a potential additional route in and out of the area, which was felt would be beneficial to the whole traffic throughout the whole Bridgeport area, and eventually identified a potential project. As you can see, it's shown there, it uses some new street and some existing streets to achieve that, the goal of having a southern, southern route, if you will, in and out of the Seaboard area and the Bridgeport areas, Bridgeport West area. So we've applied for additional rise funding, about, it's a $5.7 million project, so 80% of that. And that will actually go before the DOT board, commission tomorrow. We've worked extensively with the DOT staff to bring this forward and, and with our engineering staff and, and Howard R. Green as well. So one of the advan... I'll just say one thing, one, one more thing is the advantage of, of this route is that it keeps that traffic from having to cross the rail line that runs through Bridgeport. So, so if there was, it did happen to be a train in the area, which is about once a day, truck, trucks and employee traffic would not, there would be a route to get in and out without being stopped by a train, so...
Because is that what's happening right now, right? Or that's, they are crossing a railway now?
Well, potentially during the day, depending on shift changes and so on, you could, could get in the way of, of traffic. So it's not a tremendous problem there, but it is a problem from time to time. I think usually about once a day, a train goes through that area, which is important to a lot of the businesses in there, our rail served. But nevertheless, this would provide a, another access route that's not, that's separated from the trains, so Glenn?
Yeah, Glenn, I was the engineer, and essentially, as you can see on this aerial here, we're utilizing existing Discovery Drive. We'd be tying off of that, reconfiguring the intersection here so that Discovery will be the primary route. I don't know if we've revised or what the new name will be, because it does shift alignment down here. We're tying into the existing Al Haynes Drive. And then we're going to be adjacent to the railroad right through here is the existing railroad. We're going to squeeze it in in between the structure here and the railroad here, crossing the drainage ditch that heads out to the Missouri River. And this, right now, it's just conceptual. There's variations that could be applied through this area in yellow because of land acquisitions, but we're utilizing as much of the roadway network that we can. Discovery Drive towards Aviation Boulevard, those medians there, we will look at potentially eliminating those based on the anticipated movements and turning movements that may need to be done in there. As it relates to the existing RISE grant, we do have a number, a number of intersections that are anticipated to be improved. One here at Expedition and Harbor Drive, and then here at Discovery and Harbor Drive. Those are anticipated to have traffic signals and turn lanes added. If we are successful in getting this grant for the new roadway, these intersection improvements would not be needed. So we would do some, the cost of, and I think Marty can touch on that, some of the cost deductions for those could be applied.
The two, the two areas that Glenn indicated would not be needed because a lot of that traffic on Harbor would shift over to the new road is about a million dollars, a little, just a little bit over a million dollars. So what we've asked the DOT to consider is, is basically shifting those funds to the, to this new road. So overall, I think it's about $9 million in total funding, so it's a, it's a pretty large ask to the DOT. But this is a big project. It's a, it's obviously one of the biggest projects in our history, so we think that it's justified to, to ask for that kind of support.
So is it 20% on the 9 million then, or is it on the 57, 5.7 million?
So, well, it's, it's 80, 20 for the, for the first phase and the second phase together, so. And, and Seaboard Triumph has offered to assist us with that funding, or we haven't finalized it, to helping split that cost, more or less.
More than split, wasn't it?
What's that?
Was it more than split? Or just split what's left?
We've asked them to split the cost of the, of both phases, and they've, they've agreed to do that up to, up to a certain amount, so...
Okay, so it's...
I can ask Mark, he's sitting here, but they've been pretty involved in the whole process from the beginning, so...
Mark Porter, Seaboard Triumph Foods. And yes, we've, we've agreed to essentially a 50-50 split on the, the 20% for the total of the two projects together, which works out to be right at a million, a million dollars for, for our portion, a little, little over.
So what, TIF money will pay for our portion, is that correct?
I think for the most part that we're, we're using TIF for, for our, both phases of our, of our improvements.
Because it looks like our, our portion would be 645,000?
It's, it's in the, it's in the Downer Park TIF area, and all this growth is of course helping us with that type of financing, and I think that's the plan, is to use TIF funds.
Okay.
If the second RISE grant is approved, you won't probably start anything until the summer of '18?
Correct, yeah. We'll work through the design immediately, as soon as we can get a, a contract negotiated, work through this year on the design for construction as soon as we can in 2018.
So there's a lot of construction that's going to take place this year on the first phase, but...
So right now, are the trucks, will they be encouraged to go down Aviation and go up Harbor Drive to get to Seaboard Triumph, or?
That's what I was wondering.
Are they just, what's the route in the meantime? Yes. Where do you anticipate this summer when they open? How the traffic flow will go?
It'll really...
They're going to come from, they're going to come from the south, and they're going to come from the north. And that's why the DOT is real concerned, because the Singing Hills is already stressed.
Yes.
And so this would just flow it all on the south side, right?
So they're coming...
What would help? Get it, I, I didn't know you were parallel on that road, but that's a great plan.
Yeah. The traffic flow would be much, much better, as well as accessibility.
All is said and done, I think you're going to see traffic from both, both the airport interchange and the Singing Hills interchange significantly increase as part of this plant. The number of employees and trucks that are coming in every day.
Yeah, it's going to make a difference where they're coming from, that's for sure.
Yeah. We certainly appreciate the participation.
Yeah, absolutely.
Really do, but, but it will...
Support from the council and the city.
Will improve accessibility as well, won't it?
Yeah, the, the only comment I'd add is, is it's been great to, to see this new creative solution to the, to the traffic. The Boulevard of Champions patent and the Singing Hills exchange would have been very taxed with, with all of, all of this volume to the north. So, so this new road, I think, would be a, be a huge benefit to, to everybody in the industrial park.
And so Marty or Glenn, talk to me about, so we don't want to, it wouldn't want it to go just on Harbor Drive and then cut up north to parallel at the curve because it would just be too much traffic, because then you have other people as well as the employees? Is that the thought? Because if they go off, I mean, I would just think if I was an employee or a truck or something, then you got to have a straight shot all the way down Harbor and then go up.
So you're seeing it right through here?
But you got to remember that the trucks that are going to unload are going to unload right here on that road.
Where?
Right.
Where the new road.
Seaboard Triumph Parkway.
So they're not going to want to go into the plant drive all the way around the plant if they can come up and take this road.
Where the mouse is, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, that's where the, that's where the unload of the live hogs.
And then when they get off the interstate is right at Aviation, right?
Correct.
Right? So what I'm saying is if they get off at Aviation and then take a quick r... Oh, yeah, can they?
Can't take a quick ride.
Yeah, that's right, that's right, that's why.
You've got to come back up to Discovery.
And go down, and then down to Harbor, that's why.
Yeah, and again, you're staying on the side of the railroad, too, so...
No, you're right.
Yeah, it probably is. Yeah.
That makes sense.
Good job.
Thank you. I appreciate your work.
Seven are actions adopting construction documents. A is a resolution adopting plans and specs for the construction of the asphalt seal coating project at Gateway Airport. B is a resolution adopting plans and specs for construction of the Gordon Drive and 158th Street traffic signal project. A is a resolution relating to bonds, a resolution electing classification, resolution fixing the date for a meeting to issue GO, GO bonds not to exceed $15,250,000. C is a resolution fixing the date for a meeting to issue GO bonds not to exceed 1 million. D is a resolution fixing the date for a meeting to issue GO bonds not to exceed 1 million. E is a resolution fixing the date for a meeting to issue GO bonds not to exceed 1 million. F is a resolution fixing the date for a meeting to issue GO bonds not to exceed 1 million. G is a resolution fixing the date for a meeting to issue GO bonds not to exceed 400,000. H is a resolution fixing the date for a meeting to issue GO bonds not to exceed $3 million. Nine are actions relating to agreements and contracts. A is a resolution approving a home investment partnership intergovernmental agreement between Sioux City, South Sioux, and Dakota City. B is a resolution approving amendment number one to the consulting services agreement with DGR Engineering for additional design services for the Lewis and Clark Park facility upgrades. Ten are actions authorizing the issuance of checks. A is a resolution authorizing final payment to RP Constructors, Constructors for 19th Street and Pier Street Emergency Storm Sewer Repair Project. B is a resolution accepting the work of Lazard Contracting for construction of the sanitary sewer on Xenith Drive East of Myrtle Street project I need to abstain. Eleven are approve the checks issuing for the reporting period March 2017 in the amount of $8,417,136.85. Twelve are applications for beer and liquor license. See the list come forward if you have any questions. Thirteen, I received a minute. See the list come forward if you have any questions. Call the roll on any of those if no one's to be heard. Call the roll, please.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Fourteen is a hearing and ordinance adopting a site plan for a portion of Wesley Way Park right of way adjacent to 23rd West Third Street. P&amp;Z recommends approval. I'll move it.
Second.
Susan Stewart, Chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission. This was approved unanimously. This is the first of a series of items that you're going to have on your agenda today involving small, I guess stealth cell towers that also have streetlights hung from them. This one was adopted unanimously by the members of Planning and Zoning.
I'll move first, oh, I did move first reading. Anyone to be heard? Call the roll, please.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
Will this improve our...
Greckin?
Aye.
Will this improve our service with Verizon that we can't hardly even get on, where our phone just sits and spins now, but we pay for it?
I would suggest that you ask Fiber.
I'm asking them right now. I'd like to know before I vote on it. Seriously, the service is horrible right now. I'm not trying to be critical, but I'm a big Verizon user, and it's discouraging when you pay a lot of money for a cell phone and it just spins when you're trying to find stuff.
We refer to that as the death spiral. Jeff Zizda with FiberCom. Mayor Scott, thank you. Yes, this is exactly what this new technology, and we call it new technology, is supposed to do. Verizon, in this case, who is our customer for this situation, is exactly that. They're trying to provide better coverage in areas, obviously in many of these areas where there's very poor coverage. Also, many of these areas are also areas where there's events and high traffic, and now you get a bit, large group of people. And again, it all comes down to physics. Everyone is trying to take photos, send it out, and you get that problem. So yes, this is the first step.
Bedroom is not a high-traffic area.
No, I'm sure it's not.
It doesn't work very good there.
I don't need to know that.
It doesn't work very good there, my friend, so it's more than just high-traffic areas that we're having problems.
Yeah, and, and exactly that. And also, too, I, I would, I would also let, let everyone know here, this is part of a shift in our industry. So many people disdain the large, big towers, and we call them the big sticks, to start moving away from that, getting the coverage more aesthetically pleasing, more concealed, and it'll be smaller coverage areas with better service from that somewhere. So to answer your question, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Don't have one on 41st Street.
As I say, there's not one proposed right outside the house.
Anybody opposed to waiving the statutory rule?
No.
I'll move that.
Second. Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Capran?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Second and third? Second. Commends approval. I'll move it. Second.
This is another one of the stealth cell, 40-foot stealth cell towers. The owner of the building in quest by, in front, the right-of-way in front of which this tower is to be located, did appear, he would like it to be moved somewhere else. FiberCom, I believe, convinced the commission that there were, I think they called them propagation studies, that there's a lot of analysis that goes into these cell locations, and so this was the best location that would eliminate the problems that Mayor Scott has from time to time.
Anyone to be heard? Call the roll.
Capran?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Anybody opposed to waiving the statutory rule?
No.
No.
I'll move it.
Second. Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Capran?
Aye.
Sixteen is a hearing and ordinance adopting a site plan for a portion of Glen Oaks Boulevard Right-of-Way, adjacent to 3414 Glen Oaks Boulevard. P&amp;Z recommends.
Don't we have to move the second and third?
Yeah, we do have to do that. Thank you very much. I'll move second and third on 15.
Second. Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Capran?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
Now I'll move 16. P&amp;Z recommends approval.
Second. Scott?
Is this, is this the one that, Susan, is this the one that there's a question on about the location on, on number 16?
16 is the one, I don't know what you mean by question about location, the owner of the building and question.
Is this the one right across from the house?
No, it is not. This is down by the chamber. This is the building just right north of the chamber between where, like Mills Shellhammer Insurance is.
16, or?
16 or 15?
We're on 16 now.
Okay, we're on 16. No, no, this is, that, that was on Nebraska Street, Dan, I think, the one you're talking about.
That's coming up on 17, then.
Correct.
Thank you, Susan.
Okay, sorry.
That's all right.
Okay, you're all done with 15 now, so I get to talk about 16?
Yes, ma'am.
This was unanimously approved by the commission. There were no, no people commenting on it.
Thank you.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Call the roll.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Capran?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Seventeen is a hearing and ordinance adopting a site plan for a. Oh, got to move second and third.
Wave and second. You want to wave?
I don't know.
Wave second, third.
Yeah, I want to wave second and third.
Yeah.
I want to do them all next week again. Okay. I'll move, we wave second, would you second that?
Second.
Waters?
Aye.
Capran?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Second and third?
Second.
Capran?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Capran?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Second and third?
Second.
Commends approval. I'll move it.
Second.
This was also unanimously approved by the commission, as Councilmember Moore mentioned. This is in a residential area of Nebraska Street. It was going to be pretty much close to the, the owner was going to be able to see this out her window. It was moved around the corner, and she was satisfied with this change in location.
Well, it was moved around the corner.
Correct, it was, wasn't it?
Yes.
Just, yeah, it was.
Put out to the area. Moved to the.
Kind of moved to an area that wasn't written right in front of the house.
Chris Maden, Planner. This one was moved more towards the intersection, and with the stealth design and the streetlight on it, the neighbor was not opposed to the aesthetics or the location.
Okay, was this the one that needed to be moved, like 251 feet, or is that another one?
Next one.
Okay, so I'm getting ahead. Okay.
We have a motion and a second? No one to be heard? Call the roll.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Capran?
Aye.
I'll move, or anybody opposed? I'm assuming not. I'll move second and third.
Second.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Capran?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
I'll move second.
Scott?
Yeah.
Who was the second again?
No, I moved to second and third.
Okay.
We'd already moved.
Alex seconded.
Okay, that's what it was. I didn't hear, sorry.
Alex is the second.
Yes.
Yes.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Capran?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Okay, hearing, 18 is a hearing and ordinance site plan for a portion of Indian Hills Drive Right-of-Way, adjacent to 2307 Indian Hills. P&amp;Z recommends approval. I'll move it.
Second. This item was replaced an existing light pole. The owner of 20, the property owner of 2307 did appear before the commission. He wanted the pole to be located 50, approximately 50 feet away from its, well, is that right? 50 feet away from its previous loc, or he didn't want it right in front of his house. And the city engineer talked about the need for streetlights to be uniformly spaced and how such a move would not allow uniform spacing of the streetlights. The commission, one member of the commission voted against this item, but the remainder voted in favor. And I don't know, Chris, if there's anything else you'd like to say about this?
Do we ever make an exception to the uniformity rule that we seem to have in place? Chris, where the streetlights are uniform?
That would be engineering. When we did go out and look at each of these sites, we did identify any existing streetlight that could be replaced, and this was the streetlight that was chosen by FiberCom to be replaced. So you can see on the map, this is the property that it's in front of, and there is an existing streetlight. It's kind of hard to see here with the rendering, actually is over the top of the existing streetlight that's there today.
It's at the green dot on the aerial view.
And where do they want it?
There's another existing streetlight to the west, kind of off the map here, but just to the west of this entrance to St. Michael's Church. Approximately 250 feet to the west.
That doesn't work for you? I'm, I'm just asking. It truly is a question, because, I mean, if it doesn't work, it doesn't work, but.
First and foremost, I would say, if the city would require FiberCom to move that pole, we, we would not be opposed to it. However, on the other side of it is, i- if you notice, there's a substantial apartment complex right to the south of there, and we believe our, our customer in that case is trying to serve that and unload to there. Yeah, so again, from a physical standpoint of view, we would not oppose it. As far as our customer, obviously, we'd have to go back to them and go through the process again, and them do their propagation studies.
And there's a light pole there now?
Correct, there's a streetlight there.
Yes.
This would replace that existing streetlight.
But is that more, that's a taller structure, isn't it?
By five feet. The light would be at the same exact height.
It's just the addition.
Correct, yeah.
I mean, I might be thinking wrong in this. I'm just, I'm putting myself, if I lived there.
Sure.
If you could move it, but I wouldn't want you to move it if it didn't work for the apartments, so.
Who wouldn't want a streetlight right by their driveway when you're coming home at night?
Yeah.
Well, and my question is, it's already, there's already one there.
Yeah, it's there.
It's there.
Most of us would like a streetlight.
And I would add also, too, I would add also, too, we're going to build these to a higher specifications than just a standard light pole, because obviously, there's communications, there's 911 service and all that, so it's going to build, be built more rigidly and structurally sound from that standpoint of view, and be well-maintained.
If there wasn't one there before, I would maybe understand, or something, you know.
We have a motion and a second? Call the roll, please.
Waters?
1521.
Capran?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Capran?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Capran?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Capran?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
I moved to waive the rules.
Second.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Capran?
Aye.
I moved to waive the statutory rule.
Second.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Capran?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
20 is a hearing and ordinance adopting a site plan for a portion of Nebraska Street Right-of-Way, adjacent to 1320 Nebraska Street. P&amp;Z recommends approval. Move it.
This was unanimously approved by the commission. There were several individuals that spoke about the item. They both spoke on behalf of the Castle on the Hill organization. One of them expressed concern about health hazards from poles. Another one spoke about, would like to see this moved to an alleyway where there are some existing poles, and he was concerned about maintenance and how it might block traffic in the street.
Call the roll, please.
Waters?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
I'll move to waive the statutory rules.
Second.
Capron?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Trying to find a picture of that. Where are we at, moving second and third?
Yes.
I moved.
Okay.
Second. Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Twenty-one is a hearing and ordinance adopting a site plan for a portion of Indian Hills Drive right-of-way at four thousand one Indian Hills Drive. P&amp;Z recommends approval, I'll move it.
Second.
This was unanimously approved by the commission, there was no one commenting on the matter.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
I'm voting for this one, because it's only about a half, about a block from my house. Will that help or not? Okay.
Guaranteed, isn't it?
I'll move second and third then.
I put that one in first if it were me.
By the parking, by the parking.
Hold me a second.
Second.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Move second and third.
Second.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
Twenty-three is a hearing and ordinance adopting a site plan for a portion of Stadium Drive right-of-way adjacent to four thousand sixty-one Stadium Drive. P&amp;Z recommends approval, I'll move it.
Second.
This one was also unanimously approved, there was no one in the audience speaking on it.
Call the roll, please.
Capron?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
Twenty-three is a hearing and ordinance adopting a site plan for a portion of Stadium Drive right-of-way adjacent to thirty-four hundred Line Drive. P&amp;Z recommends approval, I'll move it.
Ditto on this one, there was unanimously approved by the commission, and there was no one speaking on it either in favor or opposition.
Thank you.
Other than Fibercom, of course.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
I move to waive the rules.
Second.
Waters?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Second.
Scott?
Aye.
I'll move second and third.
Second, second and third.
Waters?
Aye.
Capron?
I'm glad you're enjoying this.
Greckin? Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
There are non-existing light poles, correct? There are just two of them, yeah, that's what I thought.
I think so.
Yeah.
Is that the way you write it, too? Okay. Otherwise, we're putting them where the existing light pole.
Correct, they were, we were able to coordinate that.
All right.
I shouldn't say we were, Fibercom was able to coordinate that, so it would have the most minimal impact on the right-of-way of the city.
Exactly. Okay, thank you.
So we've already done first reading, now I'll move to waive the rules.
What, we're done with that one, I think? On to twenty-four? On to twenty-four?
Oh, we have moved it? Yeah, we're moving to waive the rules.
Last one, here we go.
Or have I done first, have we voted on?
We're all done with twenty-three. Yeah.
Right, okay.
You moved and seconded, I seconded.
Are we on twenty-four?
Moved it, so call the roll.
Okay.
And Dan seconded.
Are we on twenty-four yet, or?
Yeah.
Okay, this was also unanimously approved, there were some questions from the commission